Good evening. Good evening. Thank you and welcome. It's a joy to see so many people here at the start of our school committee. I'd like to call our school committee meeting to order for Monday, March 18th, 2019. Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Mr. DeCantor.
Here.
Mr. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Menon.
Here.
Mayor Holliday.
President.
Mr. Hoffman.
Here.
Mr. Breeden.
Here.
Mr. Calhoun.
Here.
Thank you. Could we please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Menon?
Okay. Yes, why don't we do warrants in minutes and we'll do public comment. Do we have any warrants, Mr. Cole?
Yes, we have some, two warrants. I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate nineteen thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars and thirty-one cents be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
In the second warrant, I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate three hundred seventy-five thousand five hundred forty-six dollars and forty-eight cents be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're unanimous, we pass. We have a set of minutes from our last meeting, March 4th. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any changes, additions, subtractions? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're gonna have a short period of public comment here. We have changed our, the way we do this a little bit. We're asking you to sign in and put your address if you have something that you're gonna share with the community. That way we can make sure we get the spelling right and the address right for our minutes. And again, you can speak on whatever topic you need to speak on. Please keep it within about two minutes or so. Does anybody have any public comment they'd like to make? Oh, after all that big introduction? All right. Seeing none, I'm gonna turn this over to our superintendent, Sean Gallagher.
Great. Once again, this is the favorite part of the meeting where we have the opportunity to recognize our faculty and support staff and the great work of our students. And I'd like to start those recognitions out first. Teacher that we'd like to recognize is Ms. Jen Goroskin. And I have my little write-up, but I already know how much she already does for the district is I got to be part of her curriculum where I had the opportunity to present what a superintendent does on a day-to-day basis with her and her staff. But basically, we're gonna be recognizing her for the work that she's done with the town veterans and the local veterans. So a few years ago Congressman Moulton was kinda challenging different districts in the sense of we should invite our heroes, local heroes, in to the schools and they could give kind of a real-world experience of what veterans do for our country and kind of give them a background of all the different sacrifices they make. And Jen Goroskin really took this four years ago and it's been part of our recognizing veterans ceremony where we have the local veterans come in and really do like a town hall with our students. And all the work that she does for that with the eighth grade curriculum is just amazing, but this is also a wonderful way to outreach to, you know, true role models for our youth and they can make those real-world connections. I'd like to have Principal Furlong, if you would like to come up and say anything else on behalf of Ms. Goroskin?
You don't need to put your address and name on it.
No, we know where you live.
Well, Ms. Goroskin, I know you're out there with your two little people. So thank you for coming tonight. I'm happy that we get the chance to recognize Jen. This has been, I think, a long time coming. She is somebody who is a mom in this community, a teacher in this community, and a civic activist in this community. And she wraps out altogether in her eighth grade curriculum and models for our students, I think, just in the way she lives her own life here in our community, what it means to be civically engaged and welcomes students to be engaged around whatever topic is important to them. And so introduces them to different people and their stories. Superintendent Gallagher was one of them. And the Veterans Town Hall is an important piece of that, of having veterans come in and tell their story about what their experience was serving their country. And it's a really wide range of people who, men, women, people who are actively engaged in Vietnam, people who were in other different conflicts, people who are military, medical, so a variety of different people. And she's, you know, pulled this off every year, coordinating, finding the veterans, bringing them to school, sending them out. It's a logistical nightmare a little bit and she's really stuck with it. So I'm glad we get a chance to recognize her for that. Jen?
All right. Here. Hold on, one. Here. Here's a little certificate.
There we go.
Yeah, one more. Thank you.
All right. So this is, I guess, the knock night right here. So many of you probably have read in the local daily news, the Diversity Club. That's the next group we'd like to recognize with their advisor. And I'll have Principal Furlong kinda talk a little bit more detail on that. But what's really amazing in my transition to Newburyport, recognizing like when the students have an idea, they wanna make their schools better, or teams better, or forming arts, whatever that is, they really assemble. And this district, the students come forward not with just complaints, but with solutions. And I really believe when I learned more about the Diversity Club and I know some of these eighth graders that are out there, and, you know, they're gonna be changing the world. They're already changing the school system. So they come to my office now and I got all these new initiatives. So it's an awesome, it's an awesome community. But what I also think that's really helpful is you have an administration that's willing to listen to students, hear their ideas, and then plan together and formulate an action plan. So, and I think that that's kinda how this Diversity Club started. And I'll have Ms. Principal Furlong kinda talk more about it. But with her support and her administration, these things wouldn't happen. So I think she deserves a little round of applause.
I wonder if we can start with the Diversity Club always coming up here? Because I know I have a couple people who are gonna speak with me. Come on up.
Come on up.
Recognize you guys from the picture.
In the frame, right?
Famous.
So, so this is, the Diversity Club does a variety of different things, but this is sort of the main group who has met and done on the organization. And I'm having Whitney, she's gonna speak a little bit, but it was really her brainchild. Based on just some work that she did in her English Language Arts class in seventh grade, a project that she began to research, an idea that she had for our school in terms of creating a club that would increase awareness of diversity and provide different outlets and opportunities for students to have different voices heard. So we met together for like six months with me sending her off to like, well, you need to do more research on this, you need to go to high school and talk to these people. And she did all of those things and really stuck with it. And we were able to find an advisor in Ms. Wachinski and start the club this year. So one of their initiatives that they had in February, second of February, is this thing called Start With Hello Week. And I'm just gonna have Whitney just tell you a little bit about why they chose that as one of the activities that they would run this year.
So we specifically went into Start With Hello Week because in our school, it's very, like, there are different groups of people and not everyone really comes together. So we thought you should do Start With Hello Week because it prevents social isolation from people. And so there's different activities each day to get people to, to get people to come together and meeting people. So one day is Say Hey, is Hey Day, where you say hey to people that you don't know and everyone has name tags. Another day is Sit With Someone Who Don't Know At Lunch. So I think that we wanted to do that to, to make our community and environment and our school be a better place to be in.
So it was a whole week long, a different event each day. Does anybody wanna add on?
Well, we've got like the banner in the cafeteria now where everyone's sticking out on the banners. And we had lollipops to give to people for random acts kindness. There's like a connection between that and this.
It's been such a heartwarming club to have in the building and so nice, I think, as Sean was saying, to have it be student-driven and coming forward with what are solutions, how to make the school just a warmer and more welcoming place. Middle school can be a really tough time socially and it's good to have people who are recognizing that and trying to make it better. So, thank you all. Appreciate it.
We'll take a couple of minutes break here.
Told, back, shot in the front. I guess I'm in the front.
Two rows, guys, two rows.
All right. We're getting into your photo, we have two rows. All right. We have two rows. There you go. Perfect. Thank you. All right.
The mayor's right up there, so we can do this. Okay, look, that looks like a tax, state school committee.
Diversity.
Gender equality, one more time.
Diversity.
All right. Congratulations. Awesome job. Thank you all.
We're gonna resume our meeting here, having had the chance to recognize people who are doing really wonderful work. And we're gonna jump the agenda a little bit and ask Peter D'Ambrosia to give us a report. He's our Newburyport High School student representative for this meeting.
Awesome. All right. So I'm just gonna give a little summary of what the high school's been up to over the past couple of weeks and what we're gonna do in the upcoming weeks. So on student council, we had our second meeting, or big meeting of the school year, last Monday. And basically, every homeroom or advisory selected a member and those people attend monthly meetings. And we address issues at the schools such as vaping, we're planning a dance, excuse me, we're planning a dance this week. We, so this week is actually Spirit Week at the high school. The student council is very involved in that. So each day has a different theme and it's gonna be, people who participate are given prizes such as candy and other fun stuff. So today was Green Day in honor of St. Patrick's Day. Tomorrow is Pajama Day, so students are gonna wear their pajamas and comfortable clothing. And then Friday is Clipper Day, so everyone's gonna wear school colors. And then on Friday, there's a school dance, which is gonna be awesome. Today was the first day of spring sports practices, which is always a fun thing. Last Friday, I believe, all the sophomores participated in a practice MCAS. And the reason for this is because the MCAS is now online, so it's a pretty different. So they're just getting an opportunity to familiarize themselves with that. This Thursday, the National Art Honor Society has their induction ceremony, which is always a good thing. And then on April 10th, all the sophomores are having a chance to participate in a future Directions expo, which is pretty much, there's gonna be a large group of professional people who have a variety of different career paths. And they're gonna share their stories and insights regarding their profession. Students are gonna be able to circulate through these career clusters. They're gonna be able to go through two, I believe. And they're gonna, they chose these two based on their interests, which they found out, they found their interest in the advisory last week. And I wanna especially thank the guidance department and a few people such as art courier Shelley Des Moines, Joanne Distanis, and Andrea Wheatman. Again, I apologize if I butchered any names. And then we have a speaker for this event, which is really cool. He was actually a Newburyport alum named Matt Mutola. He graduated in 2011 and currently works for Microsoft. So he's gonna end the expo and he's gonna talk about his career and pretty much the future of jobs. So that's been really what's happening with the high school. There's a lot, obviously, there's a lot more going on, but these are just like a few highlights of what's happening.
Thank you. Highlights indeed. Thank you very much.
And just, I wanna thank Peter. Mr. Wolf's idea and working with the student council is to have new reps coming in and reporting out, to have them involved with the student, with the school committee. And I really appreciate it. Great job, it's the first time through, and we're really proud of you guys.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I will turn it over to Sean, maybe we'll turn it over to somebody else who are the next item on the agenda.
Which is the Model UN presentation. So very proud of this organization and the advisor. And really gonna have them report out on kind of what the activity and the challenges that they've had. I'm not sure if Mr. Wolf wants to introduce anybody, or is, he's probably okay back there in the, in the crowd, so. Yeah, you can go right to this mic right here. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, that, that mic is for the television. I don't think it goes to the home room.
I'll try to project that.
Bet.
I'm Matt LaChapelle. I thank you for having us. This is my co-advisor Wendy Crofts. And behind me, I have some members of my Model UN team. This year was the first year that we ran Model UN as a class. It was a world affairs diplomacy class. Ms. Crofts and I have been running the Model UN team for the last seventeen years. We came to you in the fall and let you know that this was the maiden voyage of our class, which I think was a success. I'll let my students speak to it over a few applause. This year, we went to Rutgers University in New Jersey. The conference had over twelve hundred kids at the conference. All of our students did a phenomenal job. They spoke on all kinds of different topics. I'll let Ms. Crofts kind of highlight a few of those. But we did a great job. I should also note that Max Foltz among us was noted for having an exemplary performance as the most improved delegate from day one to day four. So he did a really, really nice job for us, as did all of our team members. So I will, Ms. Crofts, you want to speak to a couple of topics?
Absolutely. So we had a team of twenty students that attended, so I'm not gonna read you every single topic because it would take a while. But these are some highlights of some committees and topics. One was the Disarmament and International Security Committee, and the topics were viral weapons, which was combating biological weapons and espionage. Another highlight was the International Atomic Energy Agency with the topics of advancing nuclear medicine and the illicit trafficking of nuclear material. Another was the UNEP or the UN Environmental Program with the topics of plastics in the marine environment and waste management and pollution in Southeast Asia. And, let's see, another nice committee that was really kinda hit home for a lot of, a lot of us was the UN Office on Drugs and Crime with the topics of the North American opioid crisis and hawala money laundering. The hawala money laundering, we knew nothing about, but we all learned together. And then in addition, we had, let's see, five students play roles on special committees where they basically had to adopt a character and then negotiate as a diplomat. And a few highlights were the Historic NATO Committee where Max represented Slovenia at the annual NATO summit of 2010. So it was also a historical committee. So we had to like time, travel back in time, which is kinda neat. Let's see, we had the African Union where Zach Elias represented the Cote d'Ivoire in discussing how to attract foreign investment to Africa. And then Cam's here. We had the Crisis Committee where Camden also had to travel back in time to the Congo Crisis of 1960, and he represented Oyendando Kabangu. So, you know, it was a really, really exciting, you know, four days and also, you know, months of preparation that went into our successful performance. So you should be really, really proud of them. A few students are gonna share their experiences.
That would be great.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jillian Gray and I'm a senior at the Newburyport High School right now. And I just wanna thank the school committee first and our wonderful advisors for giving us the opportunity to go to Rutgers because these real-world experiences are so valuable to us, 'cause there's only so much you can learn about in the classroom, but when you're working with other people from other schools to solve these real-world issues, it really puts into perspective how relevant these issues really are. And it also empowers us to collaborate with other students. So for my committee, I was representing Iran on the, in the healthcare department. So we worked on looking at different areas, particularly war-torn regions and areas that deal with poverty and how we can bring healthcare to those regions. And my committee was really interesting because obviously I had to put myself in a position that, and the shoes of a very different country from what my own beliefs may be. And it was really interesting for me because I was able to look at healthcare as how we can help everyone in the world. And through the perspective of Iran, I was able to develop my own opinions and I was able to work with others, which was really valuable to me. So I am so thankful that everyone has been super supportive of this and I encourage everyone to have a similar opportunity because it was really valuable to me. So thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Samantha Lucy. I'm also a senior at Newburyport High School. And so this was my second year doing Model UN, but obviously the first time doing the class. And I really enjoyed the program because we were able to spend a lot more time working with our advisors and researching on our topic. And I really felt like I was able to kind of go more in-depth into what I was researching compared to last year where we didn't have the classroom experience. And so this year, I was on the Commission for the Status of Women. And my topic included reproductive health rights for women and also combating workplace violence in the Southeast Asian region. I've always been a really passionate advocate for women's rights and role as a woman in the community and all around the world through, through travel experiences. However, I had to take on the role as a diplomat from Iran, so an Islamic country where women are typically seen as homebody figures. And so this is really difficult for me because I wanted to be involved in the big aspects of my committee that involved pushing for change, but I had to take on the role of a country that doesn't really want women to take on a new role. And so I was able to work alongside people who had similar perspectives, like countries like Pakistan and other countries in that area who have similar Islamic ideals, to kind of work together. And we created a resolution that focused on assimilating some freedoms for women into our proposal or resolution, excuse me, resolution. But then we also were able to kind of take on an idea that like a woman's religious values and home values should also be, contribute to whatever we decided we're going to be in the next plan for the future. And so that was really cool for me to see that you could kind of take on an opinion that wasn't your own and also work towards creating better change. And I really wanna thank everyone for giving us the opportunity to go to Rutgers because I got to meet a lot of cool people who had similar hopes for the future. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Camden Johnson. I've been doing Model United Nations for three years and this was my first year as a, in a classroom setting. And just to kinda speak on the topic of the classroom setting, since I have been doing Model United Nations for three years, I've seen many iterations of students doing these topics. And now that it's in a classroom setting, I can say that I saw a really big step up in quality from the students. And I thought that was really just a positive impact that this had, turning it into a class like this. My topic was, as mentioned by Ms. Crofts, the 1960 Congo Crisis, which was a very interesting topic for me since it's a similar situation to the Vietnam War, as in it was a, it was a conflict kind of relating to the whole Cold War situation. So I was also a very interesting character, Oyendando Kabangu. And he was actually created for this conference. He was not a real person, but I was given a, a character guideline before the conference. And my guy stuck closely with a communist leader, which was very interesting because America had their hands heavily in the 1960 Congo Crisis. So I had to directly oppose my own nation. And it was, it was a very interesting topic for me since communism hasn't been something that's really been on the news lately whatsoever. So this historic topic really brought it back and it was very, very interesting and helpful to me. So thank you.
So my name is Max Foltz. I'm also a junior at Newburyport High School. And I couldn't agree more, just talking initially about the class, that this is only my second year. So first year, we had it just the club and this year, being the class, there was just such an immense difference between the experiences. And I think it was just so much better that we had more time, more time to research. And obviously, our advisors have done so much to help us now that it's a class. And so talking generally about my committee, when I was the first assigned it, it was generally difficult 'cause I didn't only have the light and easy topic of looking into the war in Afghanistan from about nine years ago to representing a very small Southern European nation that the most notable thing from is Melania Trump being from there. So very, very easy, but going into the committee before, just the amount of research that had to be done was insane. It was hours and hours, but just the advisors helped us so much. And that just gave us all the opportunity, including me especially, to go into the committee knowing so much more and being so educated and being able to really impress the committee chairs. And as the advisors mentioned, I was recognized. So I attribute that wholly to them for helping me out so much and allowing me to impress both the chair people. Thank you.
So as you can see, we have a very impressive group of kids. Wendy and I enjoy this immensely. It keeps us going. We're looking for our next conference next year. We'll be back to ask for permission for that, too. And we're still working on where we're gonna be going, but we'll let you guys know.
Give it an opportunity. Is anybody any questions or comments?
I just appreciate so much the follow-up. Oftentimes, we approve these kinds of trips, but we don't get the follow-up. And especially, it's such a pleasure to have four students here tonight and talk directly about the impact that this had and you to present, you know, what you learned and the role that you took there. And congratulations. Congratulations, well done. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, I just had a question, actually. This was the first year we did it as a class, and I think that it's a very substantial and very significant class, and it really does a lot to help prepare the students. For all these previous years, have you guys been competing against other schools that had already adopted the class situation?
Yes, we have. We've been doing it very well against them.
Yes, I know. I just wanted to give you a softball.
Oh, for sure. I appreciate that.
But you guys, it's tremendous. You're very well spoken, and I'm really encouraged, not only at the work you've done, but literally the topics. You know, when you introduce some of the topics that they studied, the idea of plastics in the ocean in the South Pacific is, you know, I don't know if you saw it today, but a whale washed up in the Philippines with 88 pounds of plastic in its stomach. So this is just such a, literally today, event that it's great that you were growing up and entering college with knowledge of these things that are happening all around the world. So I'm really delighted to hear it.
How many kids signed up for the class?
We have a cap at 20.
And you have 20?
Oh, yeah.
And it's a full-year class?
No, it's a, it's a class just for the fall.
So you guys actually haven't been in class?
Right, we actually have a conference in November, so we, we've had a little bit of a delay between the holidays and midterm exams and to get back here to report back to you, but we wanted to make sure that we--
Oh, this, this conference was in the fall?
Yes.
Got it.
Better memory than I did have. Terrific, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a presentation about trauma-sensitive schools. We've heard about the training that you guys are doing and the programs that you've done. It's an opportunity for us to learn more directly about it. So, great, introduce them, right?
Yes, so at this time, we'll call up Principal Rossi and her team to kind of go through trauma-sensitive schools and the training and all the work they're doing at the moment.
Hi, so this is a handful of some of our Newburyport staff that have taken impact of trauma learning, actually, all the way through to the third course and are going to be taking the fourth course coming up, starts in April, actually. And all of these people will have their trauma in learning graduate certification from Leslie University. So Leslie University has a program called LIFTS, which is Leslie Institute for Trauma Sensitivity. So I just want to intro everybody real quick. And we didn't practice this, so this is just going to be fluid, and people are going to jump in when they feel like it. I feel like what's really powerful for the school committee to hear, the information, obviously, is powerful, and when you take trauma one, it's a little bit mind-boggling when you hear the information and the data. But I think what's really powerful is the teachers speaking to what they've changed in their classroom, maybe how their thinking has changed. So I want to give the teachers an opportunity to speak. So we have Lauren Aramo, Anna Nair, Martha Trail, Eileen Payton, Deanna Safe, and Tara Ellis. Martha has to jump in in a couple minutes because she's also a Newburyport mom that needs to pick up a child from sports. So I'm just going to do a quick jump-in, and then I want you to hear Martha just share her experience before she leaves. Wrong key. Sorry about that. Here we go. Hold on. I'm not traumatized. This happens so much with technology. Very good. Oh, it's not in science, huh? It's due for recovery. Thank you, dear. There we go. Yay, thank you. So I think the first big learning is the definition of trauma, and I feel like most people do not understand the real definition of trauma. Trauma is not an experience, it's not an event that happens. Trauma is a very individualized experience for the individual. It's a reaction to an experience that results in the victim feeling helpless, vulnerable, with a loss of control and safety. You know, going into this, I think some of us, I thought of trauma as an event. You know, there's a hurricane and, you know, homes are destroyed, that's a, that's a trauma. But it's very personal, and two people having the same exact experience, one person can feel traumatized by it, and another person, just based on who they are and maybe the supports they have, may not be. So it is very personalized. I'm afraid to touch anything now. Here we go. So, in the early 90s, and it's taken how many years now to get to the year 2018, 19, where this is finally being presented and talked about all over the United States and schools. Yale University has a new program around trauma. There was a study done by the CDC and Kaiser Permanente in San Diego, California. It was a study of 17,500 adults. What's important about this study is that this, this study was done in a population very similar to many populations across the United States, very similar to a Newburyport. Another, another miss, another incorrect judgment about people that experience trauma is that it happens in lower socioeconomics, or it's a different culture, or it's a different race, and that is not the case. So this study, 17,500 adults participated. It was a very lengthy questionnaire. Seventy-four percent of them were college graduates that participated in this study, 50% female, and it grew out of a study looking at adult health. There were 10 categories of adverse childhood experiences. People filled out this questionnaire, and they responded if they had experienced any of these adverse childhood experiences, and then also had what kind of health problems or issues were going on in their lives at the adult stage. The score is one or more occurrences in category, and the, basically, one of the huge connections out of this, and we're really like, we're giving you the schmidgen of this study, you can look it up, that it increases the risk for seven out of 10 of the leading causes of death. That's a huge statistic. So just kind of let that sink in. So the ACE study, the adverse childhood experiences that they looked at were physical, psychological, and sexual abuse, emotional and physical neglect, substance abuse, mental illness, mother treated violently, and criminal behavior in the household or incarceration. And the statistics, the statistics that you see, the numbers, are the percentage of people that had experienced one of those adverse childhood experiences. So, the percentage of people that reported at least one out of those 10 adverse childhood experiences was 67%. That is a huge number. And again, this is a community just like our community. 67% reported at least one adverse childhood experience. 12%, which is one in eight, reported four or more adverse childhood experiences. And the likelihood of one or two childhood experiences, it increases with, as you go, as you move forward. So if you had a mother that was treated violently, there's a likelihood that there was also substance abuse in the home. So one adverse childhood experience increases the chance of a second one. Some of the other adverse childhood experiences that were on the form and that, you know, are continued to be looked at are homelessness, violence in the community, the death of a parent or a sibling, witnessing violence, chronic illness of a parent or a sibling, and divorce. So I'm going to just quickly jump into the ACE pyramid, and then I just want to let Martha jump in so she can go, and then Eileen's going to do some of our slides. So this pyramid basically just shows that the connection between the adverse childhood experiences and the health risks later on in life. So the next step up is there's an impact on social, emotional, and cognitive health. On top of that, adoption of health-risk behaviors, disease, disability, and social problems, and then early death. So this is like, this is the whole life perspective if you have had one or more of the adverse childhood experiences. This is a potential if supports are not put in place. Do you want to jump in real quick just to share your experience around, you know, your thinking and how it changed your thinking in the classroom?
I think first and foremost, I feel so lucky to be in a building with an administrator who is focused on the social, emotional wellbeing of students, first and foremost. So that I feel particularly thankful for because I've been in other schools, a district, that's not the case. So to be able to be in a school where that's first and foremost is huge. So for years, I've taught students that some I know have had some of these ACE adverse effects, some that I don't. But I will say this, since taking this class has completely changed the lens at which I approach those students, if I know if a child has gone through one or more of these, my level of patience and understanding is at a whole different level. Because as you'll see in the slideshow, when you understand the constant stress and the physiological change it takes on a child's brain and how that plays out in a day-to-day classroom, it was eye-opening for me. And that I am, as a teacher, being able to make day-to-day changes in accommodations and personalize goals for each of those students. Because I know this isn't a choice necessarily that they have. They are dealing with these different struggles because they have had maybe years of this constant stress, and it's changed them at the cellular level. So my approach to them is completely different now that I've had this training.
So, real quick, and then I'll pass it off to anybody, so they may just have to keep listening to my voice. The impact is huge. And again, this is a four-course study, and we're trying to just get a big impact right now with a short, mini version of this. But the exposure to significant traumatic experience has a twofold functional impact on the child's brain. Students react quickly and impact stress levels. The stress levels can preclude effective performance, and students really have to work on, and adults have to help students learn to quiet their mind to advance their learning. It also presents with more specific impacts. Learning issues in the classroom, so 100% impacts academic competence. It impacts students behaviorally. It impacts students with relationships. It impacts students with self-regulation. There is literally a change in the brain. There's a complete, the brain develops completely differently in students that have experienced trauma. The brain is influenced by environmental stimuli. The traumatic experiences can trigger the fight, flight, or freeze response. Chronic limbic stimulation, and when we talk to kids about the limbic system, we use the, you know, the definition, we will call it your downstairs brain, you know, trying to get kids to help to understand that when they're in their downstairs brain, they're not able to access the academics. So the chronic limbic stimulation can alter the development of brain function by reducing the size of certain brain structures, alter the utilization connection among the brain structure, and alter hormone transmitter secretion. It's basically, if, if the adverse childhood experience is something that is continual, then you have to think about how does your body react as an adult when you're feeling stressed? A lot of students that are experiencing this, whatever experience is going on in their personal lives, it's a constant state of stress. So for some of our students, getting up and coming to school is a bonus that they're there. This is a powerful slide because it basically shows two brains. The one on the left is a healthy brain. The one on the right is an abused brain. And what it says on the right is, the temporal lobes, which are on the top, which regulate emotions and receive input from the senses, are basically not, they're not formed. It's not formed correctly as compared to the brain on the left. So when we say that it does impact children's brain and the development of their brains, that's what it looks like in an actual child's brain. It's the biological response to the toxic stress that can be very destructive, and it can last a lifetime, as it's quoted on the bottom by the American Academy of Pediatrics. We have a short video, actually, oh, there it is, that I thought, it's short, but it's a perfect model. You need to put yourself in the child's position. You need to think of yourself attending school back in elementary school and middle school and high school, if this was something, if you had this kind of stress level in your life. This is a little bit of an example of what it's like to attend school and of your learning brain when you're able to access versus your survival brain. So I hope it will work.
Good grammar and spelling are important, but if you want to write an ACE sentence, fire messages that forge--
Welcome back. Today, I really want to think about what's the best way to teach teachers about trauma without getting them distracted with all the technical stuff, and what's the most important thing for them to understand and learn? And I thought that the best way to do it might be to just make a difference between a learning brain versus a brain and survival brain. So we'll just call it learning brain versus survival brain, and this is the difference. So, learning brain is this brain that's open to learning new information, and it's completely okay with ambiguity and grades and vagueness, and it sees the big picture. It like pulls back and is on the balcony to look over the forest and figure out what's going on. On an emotional level, people in learning brain feel calm, peaceful, maybe a little excited about what they're about to learn, maybe a little playful and having fun, too, and definitely curious, and they're not afraid of making mistakes because it's just part of the learning process. And so they're not really thinking about themselves, and they actually feel a little bit of confidence that if they just applaud themselves, they might pick up what they're trying to learn. Now, survival brain, on the other hand, is completely different. It's hyper-focused on threat. It doesn't like ambiguity, it wants clear, hard facts, it thinks in black and white terms, doesn't want anything to be gray at all. And then emotionally, you can imagine that survival brain makes people feel panicky, feel like a little obsessive and afraid of getting things wrong, and they don't feel calm and open to learning new things. They just want to get things over with. And people in survival brain also really don't like making mistakes, and they are afraid of looking stupid, too. So students in survival brain don't want to be picked on, they don't want to raise their hand and ask questions, they look stupid. And so these people are also filled with doubt about their own ability to learn stuff, and they're afraid that other people can see how stupid they really are. Now, it's really important to understand how learning brain and survival brain interact because survival brain always trumps learning brain. And it makes sense because survival brain is just trying to save your life, and so if it thinks that there's something dangerous happening, you better pay attention to it, right? But the tricky thing is that as survival brain stays on longer and longer, it's harder to get out of that, and it's harder to really go into a learning brain. And the way I think about it is kind of like the myth of Sisyphus. You know that guy who has to push a rock up the hill, and then every day it falls back down, and he has to do it over and over again? Well, being in learning brain is like being up on the high parts of that mountain. You can see the expanse of what's going on, but it also takes a lot of work to be up there. And at any second, if you're not paying attention, maybe putting effort into it, it's so easy to slip back into survival brain again. And that rock that Sisyphus is trying to push up, well, that's kind of like stress. And the more stress you feel, the heavier and bigger that rock is, and it just pushes you back into survival brain quicker. Now, the kicker is that for traumatized people, stress is a really rigid and tense thing. And so with trauma, any little stress makes that rock grow way bigger than it normally would. And because people with trauma misperceive and deal with situations as threatening and stressful, that rock just stays big all the time. Now, the good news is that-- Now, the good news is that the more you control stress, well, the easier it is to be in learning brain, right? Because that rock is a lot smaller. And what I really want to highlight for teachers is that the best way to keep students in learning brain goes back to why I spent so much time talking about attachment. Students best learn when they feel like they're safe and supported by the adults around them. So it's kind of a baby elephant. You know how like on those nature shows, the baby elephant is like playing with leaves or exploring a tree or something like that and having a lot of fun? And the only reason why they can do that is because there's a whole group of mama elephants around that baby protecting it and looking out for danger. So a kid with trauma or who's stuck in survival brain, it's kind of like that baby elephant who doesn't have protective adults around them. They can't play and learn because they're way too focused looking out for threat and danger. So this is why I really believe that the most important thing that schools need to focus on, way more important than any kind of techniques or curricula, is really whether or not they are creating an environment where students feel like they're surrounded by these big mama elephants who are going to protect them and watch out for them and make them safe. And when students have that, I bet you it unlocks their curiosity, their eagerness to learn and play as a way to learn. So I hope that's helpful. Let me know if you have any questions in the comments below. Thanks.
I, I think one thing I'd like to say on that though is that we're not just hanging around at Molen mothering these children. Curriculum is really important to us. And we really feel very strongly about all of our curriculum. But one thing that is really clear is that when any of us are stressed, when any of us are in that, right, you know, you haul them, they weren't expecting you to haul them, all of a sudden they can't do two times 10. And you can just say, yeah, no, don't worry, the midwife is just kind of relaxing over there. Calm yourself down and answer it. And then you have strategies to calm yourself down. Now, so we spend a lot of academic time, but our time in the morning, our circle time, we do it a lot in short increments throughout the day. Because it does affect their executive function. How do they plan? How do they initiate things? It affects transitions, beginnings and endings. Attention is the worst thing. You have so many attention deficit human beings these days. And you know, part of it is the stress in society. Part of it is that we are moving so much faster than a rearing society. I think it's really, it's really evolutionary. And eventually our brains are all going to have to work like that. And these poor people are just stuck with, the brain hasn't evolved enough and they're just kind of stuck in the beginning of it. But we need to deal with that, with that attention. We need to help them calm down. We need to keep them focused. And when any little traumatic things happen, the attention just goes. We need to keep them engaged in learning. See things, these kind of big expressions, aggression begins, withdrawal, perfectionism, hyperactivity, mood swings. My, you know, I was going to talk about other, other of these slides, but I'm not stressed because I know I can make mistakes because I am sure I'm great. But I think what I want to make on these and the last two slides is the hopeful thing, what we need to teach children. We're really clear. I'm very specific on teaching my children about the brain. And they do use big words like amygdala. They do know what exactly's going on in their brain. So when they have stress response, they can identify it. We have our OTs have done a wonderful job of talking to our students about being in the red zone is when you're really, really upset. Yellow zone is when you're just pretty much not paying attention and aggravated and want to know how everything is going on in the class and we talk to them. And then the green zone is how we're nice. We like to be in the green zone because if you get in the blue zone, then you're just not paying attention.
And the zones speak to self-regulation. I just want people to understand what that means. So a huge part of looking at trauma, when students have experienced trauma, is there's a real challenge with self-regulation, as you can see in the list of behavioral issues, and that's just some of them. And so we have to teach self-regulation for students to be able to access academics.
And we, you know, and we do spend time having them understand what their home strategy's on, which is really powerful. Because, and to recognize what zone you're in and what to do to get out of there. And we do have a school system, I am very grateful for all the things that you give to support us. I made a list of all the things that are just like in our rooms, things that we have. First of all, both mindset work, we're really, you know, push them that they're not stuck here. The mind is like, uh, is like muscle. The more you exercise it, the better you get. Keep exercising it. We really push perseverance and resilience in academics. I love social, emotional learning. But, you know, we have so many materials in our classroom. We have desk chairs so they can sit and they can have their rights. We have standing desks. We have rocking chairs. Some of us have wobble stools. We have corded, so, you know, they can get themselves, they can think about, all right, I'm not paying attention. What do I need to do? Go over and get it. And they understand. 10 minutes. 10 minutes is what you use that for. It's not an all-day thing. They don't just fool around with these things. They really use them. They have weighted blankets. They put them on their shoulders. They get focused, stay returning. And it really is really heartening to watch children get themselves back in the learning zone. And I really personally feel that our society is so stressed out with me thinking this, everybody, they'd be a lot less vibrant in our society. Relationships is huge, you know, lack of trust. Obviously you saw that. Um, difficulty reading faces. We do work on relationships and how to communicate. We don't know what your job's going to be, but we do know if they can make a relationship and mentor you with their coworkers and can communicate, they're going to keep jobs.
I think as a school, I'm going to jump in on this. We've talked a lot about, because one of the biggest things about a trauma-sensitive school, it's the same thing as a safe and supportive school. It's synonymous. There's no difference. A safe and supportive school, one of the biggest ingredients is relationships. And every single child, making sure they have a relationship with an adult, um, a connection with that adult. Um, and hopefully it's more than one. Um, and students that have experienced adverse childhood experiences, a lot of these things are difficult. Relationships with adults can be difficult. Trust can be difficult. Peer relationships can be difficult. So a lot of what we do is, you will never know when you enter your classroom, looking at your 24 students, who has had an adverse childhood experience, who has experienced some type of trauma. We don't know everybody. So the point of it is you're putting in supports for all students. And then as students, you know, make sure that they need additional support, we put those additional supports in place and looking at them as individuals. Um, so these are some of the just kind of little issues that pop up. Um, students may not be available to learn. Educators, and not just educators, but adults, parents, members of the community, may see symptoms of trauma experience as character flaws. So so-and-so student does ABC and is struggling with ABC. And somehow that gets out in the community, that student did ABC, and there's a judgment call on that student. Well, nobody knows what that child has experienced in their past that may get, that may cause some kind of a fight, flight or freeze, um, situation for a student. So this really requires a lot of understanding from everybody, not just the school community, but the community outside of our schools. And basically, this is where finishing out. And I don't know if you guys can jump in and anything else you want to say, but, um, this partnership with Leslie has been really powerful. Um, in 2016, the first cohort, 18 staff members in Newburyport, um, took all four of the trauma courses and received their certification. They were one of the first in the state to do this in 2016. Um, and there was, you know, like a celebration about it. Um, now we have 27 additional staff on track to complete all four courses. And we have additional Newburyport staff above and beyond that that have taken Trauma One and Trauma Two. This is, this is really everywhere. Lexington is doing this. Stonem PBD, Beverly, Triton, Penticet, all of the school systems are, are investing in this because if students do not feel safe and supported in school, they cannot access their academics. Um, so this is just real quick. These are just some changes that have taken place since our partnership with Leslie. Mindfulness practices, social, emotional strategies, PBIS. Um, we look at the whole child. And that means looking at their academic competence, their self-regulation, their health and wellbeing and their relationships. When a student is struggling, we look at all four of those areas because any one area can impact the other. And then I think, you know, and pretty much in ending this, you know, we, we want the community to understand the importance of this. Um, we need children to feel safe and connected to adults and peers everywhere in the school, outside the community. No one teacher can do it alone. We all have to take responsibility for all of our students. At Molen, it's not, this is my class and my students. It's all those kids that we see walking down the hallways are all of our students. We take care of all of them. Um, and educators will, this was a point I already made, that we'll never know everybody that's been affected by traumatic events. So you just put systems in place, um, to help support all students. And then these are just some next steps we're hoping for to continue to move cohorts through this. Um, continued opportunities for professional development for all staff. We'd love some type of community education. Um, and more financial support for staff that are interested in taking the courses. Deanna Safe is an instructional assistant at Inom School. And she's put herself through all of our courses. And she's a rock star. Um, and when we're talking about safe and supportive schools, it's everybody needs to know and understand. Does everybody need to take all four courses? No. But the impact on the brain and what this, what this looks like at the preschool level, all the way through high school, um, it's there. It exists. And, and you guys could see that from a lot of the information in our budget, which is a lot around, you know, adding more social, emotional support. So.
I just wanted to add as a teacher, I think the courses really focus you on the big idea that you don't know which one of the kids in front of you has had these experiences. I mean, sometimes we do. We're aware of this one kid and what he's been through, but you don't know. So it's really about understanding that your whole classrooms and how you approach all of the students has to be as if they all have experienced trauma because you don't know. And you don't know when someone's life is going to change because of something that's going on at home yesterday or this morning. So I feel like that for me has been the biggest shift in just sort of thinking that you don't know. So you have to assume that they need this. And that's made, and that's made a huge difference in how I sort of approach my behavior.
I tried to be as fast as possible.
Thank you.
It's a lot of this.
Somebody who's born in New York, your best speaking was perfectly comfortable. Um, does anybody have any question or feedback in their comments? I do, actually. The first thing I would like to ask is if it's possible for this slide presentation to go up on the district website?
Sure.
I, I think that that would be extraordinarily useful for the community.
Absolutely.
Um, and the cohorts that we're developing so far, is that across the district or is that right now still focusing on the Molen?
Oh, no, it's across district. Yeah, we have participation from Brezner and every school. Every school has participation, yes.
Are we using a train-the-trainer model? Are we doing the training or are we still sending folks down?
Um, well, kind of both. Yeah, it's kind of both. So people really want the certification. It goes, you know, it goes through Leslie. Um, but, but we've definitely had some professional development. I run some PD. Um, some of my teachers have run some PD at Molen. Um, we've done some PD for IAs. I did a PD, um, for some IAs in the district. So yeah, I think we're doing, we're really doing both, yeah.
Newburyport University.
Yeah.
First cohort taught some classes during Newburyport University.
But it's really incredible. And I think it's great.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Oh, well, okay, I'm sorry. If you, there's a really amazing TED Talk on this by Nadine Burke Harris. And it's about 15 minutes. It's really worth a watch. Thank you.
I guess, Sean, we focused your conversation about the budget, how was it really?
Yes, yes. We set up, so we, we were going to give a budget update, um, through talking points and discussion, but I think we decided to put those talking points into some slides so we can talk to them and then also project them to the community. Kind of where we're at in the budget process and, um, as we move forward. So I just need to set up quickly.
So if we were operating on cable TV here, this would be a time when there'd be a commercial.
We're stretched. Pause and for the viewing audience, they now came back with, I'll show up some coffee and salmon. So welcome back. Um, first of all, um, this is a great, one of the best events I've ever been to. Um, I got the judge cupcakes on Saturday, March 2nd with all these great people here. So.
Is that the school committee?
Well, well, I saw you guys eating a couple of the retreats. So yeah, more cupcakes to make. Um, so basically, oh, here we are. So going through our budget process update. So we've kind of taken, um, historically what we've done in the past and working with Nancy Lysecq and leadership team, we've added, uh, some different elements to our process. So in October, November, we developed a budget guidelines based on appropriation or 3.5 increase. Uh, December and June, where we begin our individual budget hearings and meetings with all stakeholders, we guided the needs of the schools and the departments. Presented in February, the budget forum presentation of all the individual schools and district needs, uh, along with the site, uh, school council, uh, personnel assisted with that. After our budget forum presentation, the leadership team, uh, we had some deliberations to develop a tier priority list, a tier one, two and a three priority list. Um, from there, uh, we've been working actively reallocating, adjusting, revising current operational budget to stay within that 3.5 appropriation for next year. And once again, the leadership team will have another deliberation, um, this week, Thursday, to continue to refine our overall budget priorities and operational expenditures. So there's a lot of work that's going in to this preparation and then gathering a lot of feedback from a lot of our stakeholders. And then once again, uh, really want to credit Nancy Lysecq for all her work, running different numbers and projections for us throughout the process. Um, what's challenging for us this year, as you all know, is we're currently in negotiation of three collective bargaining units. So some of these numbers, um, it's hard at this point to really put exact numbers, uh, on our budget, but we plan on having a real detailed budget report for the entire school committee at our public budget hearing. And we have a few more negotiations before that April 1st preparation, I mean, April 1st, uh, public. So as we're looking at the 3.5 percent, which is in your packet, that's up top, that's the change. We highlighted two areas that we're working on trying to generate revenue. Um, so the first area is our school choice and anticipated carryover funds. Um, we're working on that international, uh, students, um, as part of the school choice. And right now, we're currently in our four students. We had a, uh, coming into next year and we had a nice discussion- We had a coming into next year and we had a nice discussion with Chinese exchange company this morning for potential more students coming in. So that's one area that we're looking to generate and increase our revenue. And that's the other piece. I want to really commend Dawn Clay for all of her work, looking at circuit breaker reimbursement and trying to, try to, I guess, bring back as many assets back to the district as we can with funding. And as you all know, still for the state with chapter 70 and then the circuit breaker reimbursement. From the first three years the circuit breaker came on, it was funded at 75 percent, but after the last 10 years, it hasn't been back at 75 percent yet. And a lot of the superintendents are really advocating for that. And it would be helpful down the road if circuit breaker would also include transportation reimbursement. So those are some of the proposals that are on the table that we're watching as we go through our budget process. So right now, priority tier one, working with our leadership team, high school FTE increase with the adjustment council that we mentioned in our budget forum. We had all this about a month ago in the budget forum. Also the high school academics, the music teacher, that 0.7, 0.8, and then the Spanish teacher from a 0.8 to 1.0. And that's a lot of work we're doing, both at the middle school and the high school foreign language program. Middle school, to have that FTE increase and the new bridge teacher, and that was that social emotional program that Principal Fralong and her team presented. And then once again, you know, with the trauma sensitive schools, safety and supportive schools, that administrative leadership role really focusing on emotional, social emotional learning aspect, providing supports for those children that are struggling with some of the social emotional issues and some of the trauma that we get. The other piece that's also, not here, but just remember, is the Home for Little Wanderers. They're going to be partnering this month coming up at the NOK. We have a pilot program. We'll have an additional counselor in the NOK through the Home for Little Wanderers. And that was brought forward through the mayor and the Acre. Really bringing these, you know, facility, these people from the outside in. So when we're looking for providing families and students with support, we have Home for Little Wanderers that will be there to provide the family counseling and support. So there'll be no low time when we recognize that a family needs support immediately. So we're excited about that. Just want to credit the adjustment counselors and all the work. Obviously Kathy Rikio, who you all know, has been, you know, a leader in trauma sensitive schools, leader in a lot of the work that we're doing here, so she's been, she's been great. We're still looking at the grade one, that's pending enrollment. We're monitoring those on a weekly basis. That's a stipulation that we've put in since the budget forum, so Nancy Lysek and myself. Each week, we're getting those numbers of enrollment and we're monitoring both of those. And right now, you know, we're in good shape to just continue the staffing and no increases at this point in that area. But that's something that Principal Sullivan and Principal Davis really, you know, over the years of experience, the closer we get to the start of school or the end of the school year, we'll have a better handle on those numbers. So that's something that we're watching, but that's also a tier one. The other piece too is, as Assistant Superintendent Vic presented, an increase in the English language learners. So we're monitoring those numbers and looking at, you know, the increased staffing in that. So those are two main areas that we're watching on a weekly basis. So we moved some priorities to tier two and tier three. So the tier two, right now, that we currently not included in our budget at this time, is the high school academic increase, English from 0.9 to 1.0. New student activities coordinator. And basically, we're still monitoring the kindergarten enrollment based on enrollment numbers. So as you all know, kindergarten, first grade, is Principal Sullivan and Davis articulated. Those are numbers that we continue to watch. We're feeling a 0.4 preschool instructional assistant increase. We might be able to absorb that in our already operational budget. And then the priority three is the campus security and safety monitors that Principal Wolf proposed. That's kind of a priority three. We may have some other ideas on that as we continue to work through our budget proposals.
Sure. These are not currently included in the FY20 budget, but you and your team are looking for ways to include that.
Correct.
With the funds in cities.
Correct. And we get to the back, so we really identified a priority list and absolute. This is kind of a second priority list. So as we come into next year's budget season, if some of these don't make, you know, the budget, this is something that we will continue to work towards. So as we look here, so through a lot of the work that we've been doing, so this has just been a lot of work. I even think Nancy, in September and October, I said, you know, she's like Murkowski right now. This is her playoff season, so I need her healthy for the next two months. But she's been wonderful in the sense of really going back, having great conversations. So non-essential decreases, reallocations to date, you know, we're kind of looking overall the operational budget deduction. We're comfortable with around $65,000. And then leadership team deliberations, development of the priority list, budget reallocation, staffing patterns, you know, class size, there's so much that goes in to really looking at this budget. So we're looking at around $275,000 reallocation within the operational budget. And then so for us right now, with all the work that we've done, estimated balance of funding tier one priority is at $193,000. But we feel with another deliberation on Thursday, that, once we get that down, we'll be able to fund those tier one and really working hard to stay within that 3.5 allocation. So that's our ultimate goal for April 23rd. And I think we're making a lot of progress and we're working together as a team with that. The other piece, so as we continue our budgeting, review and revise budget targets with leadership, and that's that meeting I'm talking about, another meeting this Thursday. Further prioritize our FY20 spending and really ongoing increase in school choice and international student revenue. We feel that that's one area that if we can bring in more international students and we generate revenue for the district, and at the same time reallocating our resources. Continue to make our budget reductions and then we'll be ready for a detailed overview for the April 1st meeting in public hearing with the goal of presenting the finalized budget for a vote on April 23rd. That's kind of where we're at right now. Those will be all my talking points, but I'm kind of glad I threw my head for you guys. And the reason I brought this back, this photo back, is because of Jen Braskin. These were the veterans that worked with our students that day after our edifying assembly. So these are the local heroes that really presented a Q and A, you know, with our students this year, so. That's what I have.
Great. People have any feedback or questions, comments? Guys, I think that my comment would be that I really appreciate getting the snapshot sent over to you. And I appreciate how dynamic the process is.
Yes. I can't say enough about the leadership team and really everyone pulling together and trying to fund the priorities and having the ability, you know, to kind of take a priority that they may have had from the school, but kind of make it a second priority. Really with the focus on the social emotional being for our students, so.
Okay, great. And just, you know, I'm not the best in math, but we started out four weeks ago with how much money we were trying to find.
Right.
And we're, you know, we're down to a list of third of what we, what our projected deficit was.
Right. And once again, I have to credit the leadership team, you know, Nancy Lysek has done a great job. And we continue to go back. And I think the other piece too is kind of looking at our operations that we have now, maximizing the resources and reallocating resources within our operational budget to get to that 3.5 percent increase.
It means work. Thank you.
The other thing I think you have to keep in mind too is that the legislature has really, I mean, what I've been hearing for the first time, and it seems more, a lot more than just the legislative service that we've been hearing, it's a check, it's a form of a reform. And we've actually seen new bills that have been filed. There's been already a meeting by our new senator, Diana Pizagui, who are meeting people together to talk about resources and needs. Next week, we have the mayor's meeting with the Senate President Spill Cup and really champion of the reform committee, Senator Chaun. So I'm looking forward to that presentation next week. Certainly have been in conversation with our state rep. And I think that we'll probably see hopefully some changes in going forward because every time there's an increase in chapter 70, as you know, we went from a minus 0.001 or something in local, all in local aid two years ago, to a negative like 0.1 last year, to we're actually in 1. something, positive numbers this year. So, I mean, it doesn't, we're just not getting the kind of local aid that we really need to support everything we want to do in the city. But we keep at it, we keep supplementing that with grant programs. And overall, I think we can hope for, because it was probably six years ago maybe where it was substantial, it ended up being about $130,000 increase the legislature's bound, and we were able to ship that allocation back into the schools, which was very helpful. So last year it didn't happen and the city council, we had like an extra 30 grand and that won't leave it, you know, it didn't seem like anything significant to have to move, especially since we have been giving such annual allocation to the schools over the past many years. So I know it's challenging. We're on the same boat on working through our budgets, but I'm being very optimistic that we will end up with a balanced budget on or around mid-April. We're still obviously not there yet on the school budget or the city budget, but we are making strides in that direction. The other thing that is also part of this is the capital plan. And last year it was a little convoluted because we had Ruth and a science lab and MSCD. It just didn't quite follow the system that we had put in place. So this year, we've already met with the superintendent, Steve Burco, and we reviewed the capital needs for the schools. I'm not sure at this juncture how many of the priority ones and twos we'll be able to fund, but we are putting forward a request at the next city council meeting for work on the Kupla. That, and I hope you don't mind it takes some time, but I think some of the school committee understand that piece of the budget too, is that we've had three community preservation grants, but they haven't all been able to cover the full extent of the work. And this is really important, that Kupla is the very, very top of the high school, beautiful wooden structure that is in really tough shape. They've done a lot of work on the other woodwork and now this is the final piece that has to be done. And we're short $108,000 in terms of Kupla's existing budget. So I've asked our finance director if he would look at any other potentially surplus accounts within the city, but I also think it's appropriate to take some funding out of the Kelly School to fund this one-time expense because he said the Kelly School would be for school. So the council passed an ordinance on that as one potential funding source. So just wanted to let you know that that's happening. And then at our next meeting, I will present to you the other school committee requests and what we have been able to put into the capital request before the council, going forward. We'll take them probably until June to probably fund the capital or approve them, but Steve couldn't wait that long before he, he's already wants to put on the street, if he has them already, the bid for the Kupla project. And we'll let you know the status for the rest of those capital claims.
I would add to that, interestingly enough, that the Kupla project is one that I have heard from members of the community. I haven't heard of any other capital projects, but there are a number of them on there who have been in touch with me saying that it's, they really believe that it's a project that must be done.
It's a central point of our high school, you know, of our community.
It's a lot of diversity.
It's a huge idea.
So I just.
We're slowly moving along, so we're pretty close and we'll be able to find the gap there.
Great, thank you, Sean. You have a question, Sean?
I'm assuming at some point we'll have a discussion. You brought up numbers and class sizes and grade sizes and all those sorts of things. We'll have that conversation at some point, like what all that looks like.
Yes.
Thank you. Jen Braskin was here tonight. It would have been good to talk about this while she was here, but I also want to recognize Jen Braskin because she is hosting a cross-district workshop. This is actually the second one that Jen is hosting for districts around the North Shore around implementing the new social studies standards. And the new social studies standards have civics embedded into the eighth grade. And we are a little bit ahead of the game in that area because we've been teaching civics in the eighth grade for a good many years now. And as many of you are familiar with the project that Jen, well, both of our eighth grade social studies teachers do, which is the IMW project. And it's a really nice project that is a culminating project around their study of civics in eighth grade. So Jen has hosted, actually I should say Jen and Kyle, both of our eighth grade social studies teachers, hosted one workshop earlier in the year and it was so well-received that there were requests to host another. And so on our full professional day on April 22nd, we will be hosting another workshop for districts across the North Shore, an all-day workshop that runs from 8 o'clock to 2:30 for teachers to come and learn about how the project was built here, how we build our eighth grade social studies curriculum. They'll have some time to start developing some curriculum of their own. And our students will actually come in the afternoon and present to them about what the process is like for them, being a part of this project. So that's very exciting and something to be proud of. And I really appreciate all the work that Jen has put into this in making this available for other districts. We have, and we have a second cross-district professional development that I wanted to talk about too. This has come out of the North Shore Curriculum Group and this one is focused on literacy. Emily Russen has been here a few times to talk about how coordinated it is that we keep literacy in the forefront of our work. And many of the districts across the North Shore are experiencing many of the same issues around literacy that we are. And so we formed a group that's called the North Shore Leadership Series and we're going to run a five-day leadership going to run a five-day leadership professional development series around the topic of literacy. And we're working with Hill for Literacy, we're working with panels of reading experts, and the first two dates in this series are June 4th and June 12th. And we're going to be well-represented from Newburyport, and then there will be three other sessions throughout the school year next year to continue the work. So we're excited about that. It was very interesting to talk with other leaders from other districts, and we were all telling the same story. So I think this is going to be important work, and we're really looking forward to that.
What's that story?
Well, well, you've heard it from Emily, this story that Emily has come to tell, but I think we're all seeing more and more need for tier two and tier three interventions for our students in the area of literacy. We're seeing breakdowns in the needs that, well, break, I shouldn't say breakdowns, I'm going to say we're going to see an increase in student needs around early reading. We're seeing that across the board. And it's interesting because we're using a variety of methods in the districts, and yet our data, our student data, looks very similar. We're seeing, we're seeing a need to strengthen our core, to reduce the number of interventions that are needed so that we can focus more intently and more specifically on interventions as they come about. So those are kind of the big similarities that we've seen across the districts. I also wanted to update you on the wellness room at the NOC, just because I recorded on it the last time we were here. And in that time, the room, all the construction has been done, the rooms are painted, the electricians have been in, I think the electrical work got finished this week. It's just zooming right along. It's really, it's looking great. It's really shaping up very quickly. So that's exciting. And then lastly, I was going to report on technology integration tonight, but if you don't mind, I'd like to hold off on that for the next report because I got some additional questions a little later today, more about hardware and software and those kind of things. And I'd like to have the specific information to tell you about. So we'll hold off on that, and I'll include that in my assistance report the next time.
Okay, thank you.
Superintendent's report.
All right. Just some updates as we've been talking about the negotiations with three bargaining units, structural assistants, ASME, and teachers. I think we're progressing in the right direction. We've had a few tentative agreements around different areas for all three unions, which really helps negotiations move along. It also helps us prepare also, as I was saying, for our budget as we move into next school year. So I just really believe the partnership, the collaboration, and really focusing on teaching and learning has been, it's been great work with all the different groups. NEF allocations, and I just want to partner on the wellness room, and, you know, we had a great opportunity in meeting where we're allocating a lot of the funds for different projects and initiatives throughout the district, and that NEF group is just a wonderful organization who really supports learning. And the good news is hopefully the wellness space should be complete, is it by the end of April, early May? Is that what we're looking at?
We're hoping, yeah, I think it should be complete. We're going to do the grand opening towards the end of May.
Sure, yeah. And then Brian and Nick will be able to plank against our practice at the last one.
Should the other members of the school committee join our team, bud?
That's right. So we can beat the city council down the road, you know.
We're already talking about a plank to find for the high schools.
So we're going to be ready. All right.
The school is going to go for like an hour.
Their form, I was thinking. Let's go up with a formula, age and all that.
It's not fair, they are gym teachers, you know. It should be collective time.
What are the gym teachers? I'm thinking like the basketball teams, like there's no way, they'll be there all night.
Yeah.
Do you have that one contest or something? I could probably participate a little bit.
We need, I would be, we need a contest.
Only if you do it, you kill it.
I'd do it. I would have missed either.
I like, I like the idea of the collective time. I think we could throw that out there.
Over a certain age?
Painful, it's not like the age, but it's like.
All right. Going on, I've had multiple visits to a lot of the classrooms, and I've just seen some great, great lessons being taught. You know, we did Billy Donigan, who's come in and did that cowboy training for three days for, you know, 45 teachers and going out and visiting classrooms. I've just seen already some of those strategies being implemented, learning buddies at first grade and second grade in the sense of having students give each other critical feedback at such a young rate, success criteria and rubrics in those classes. And I just want to commend the teachers for being the risk takers, but have also started to implement a lot of these strategies. Took some videos, I think I might have sent the video of some of the students, a couple Friday demos, but it was really, it was, when we were going over there, we're asking students, you know, what are you getting good at today? And when they get articulate what they're getting good at at first grade and the second grade level, it's pretty impressive. So I just wanted to really touch base with teachers and, you know, just really impressed with that, along with some other great learning that's been going on throughout the district. Had a wonderful event, Celebrate America, the inter-district units, this was Thursday at the moment. It was another great community night. I think we had hundreds of parents and families there. I got to not only just see the great performance in singing, but then I got to visit some classrooms. The Miss Levitt's class, I had to reach out to fourth grader Zeke. He was selling Minnesota, so the students had encouraged you, they all thought of State, and they had encouraged you to come visit. And Zeke, not only did he have his, his little explanation of why visit Minnesota, but he also made Spam sandwiches. I had three of them.
Zeke has a sense of humor.
Yeah, Zeke and his dad were there, and so it was, you know, it was excellent. But it was just a wonderful event. You know, the students, you know, it was just great. So I just, and I want to commend, and the teachers really tied into this by a unit. They had the art, they had music, PLA, and they tied it into this. And then just even today, I got to walk through the auditorium, the shiitake presentations where sixth grade students were selling, developing, you know, same as the show, shiitake, they had a sale proposal, they had put in a presentation. And I think maybe it's because of the food, but I got to see seaside shalom, which was a restaurant proposal by the sixth graders of a nice little seaside restaurant in Israel. And so as I was listening to the proposal, why we should fund it, they also had, you know, samples, food samples. And so that was the best presentation I saw today. So I went, I went with the seaside.
What were they feeding you?
We had the, now you're, you're, it's the, what's it?
Kinnish? Come on, Sean, you didn't give it all you Jewish food.
I was looking at, it was hummus, a rack is hummus. It was really cool because they tied in the juice, the grape juice that they had. It was the selling point, it was not only was it fruit juice, but this was less fruit juice. So they tied it into the.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And it was pretty good.
I think these events were really being enhanced by invitations to the school community.
Oh, or presentations.
I felt the stock market was going to start coming, maybe some food. It's not coming from the common, but some food, I don't know. Get going. Yeah. I think, I think learning about the cuisine of countries and states is really underrated.
No, but it's just some great, great work. I also was on the local radio station, the local pulse, and had the opportunity to talk about the transition and this great school community. You know, that's been great. And as I was preparing superintendent's report, I know there's been, you know, a lot of talk on anti-Semitism and throughout the country, and I just want to reach out, you know, to the Human Rights Commission because we did a lot of follow-up with that when we had some, you know, not incidences, but a situation this fall. So not only do you follow your policy and procedures, but I think the mindset for our community is to take this and use it as a learning opportunity and restorative justice. And in my transition, as we were working through this, for the school community, I had a wonderful opportunity to go to a Human Rights Commission meeting, and then they were also part of our solution. So I think as we go forward, and we're learning, you know, unfortunately down the road having to deal with different issues on tolerance and diversity, having that organization here to brainstorm on how to problem solve and to create a restorative justice platform has been, is just a great, a great organization. And they were very instrumental in that. And then also as part of our curriculum and ideas by the Human Rights Commission, I think we're developing a great partnership. We already had that in place, but it's, it's a great organization to help us with a lot of these challenges. And I really believe the diversity club that came out of this was also an aspect of kids taking a proactive approach and really doing a lot of positive for the school environment. So I think as we, you know, as all educators, as parents, as community members, we really, you know, we watch what's going on in our society because eventually things like that trickle down into the schools. And I think if you have a proactive approach, as we watch some of these things, I think, I think it's a positive way of dealing with some tough, tough situations and sometimes when students make poor decisions around, you know, a lot of these different areas. I want to touch base on that too.
Thank you, Sean. You want to update us on entry plan?
Yeah, I'm hoping April 1st.
Suspicious name of.
Yeah, well, I figured it'd be a great day because if the school committee approves, it's great. If the school committee does not, I would say.
So I go first. Is it, I don't know if it's possible, I don't know if you want to play, but is it possible to get like an executive summary of it sent out to school committee?
Yeah, of course.
And like send a whole report out, just the summary?
Yeah, absolutely.
That would be great. Good luck with controlling that. Thank you, Sean. Subcommittee reports. Join Ed Met last time, we recorded on that finance. Finance is tomorrow morning, 11:15.
Policy.
Policy.
Policy. We had our meeting on Saturday and April 1st, because it's such a good day, we will have a packet of four policies that have major revisions to that and one new policy.
And that had good food too.
What's that? The good food at that meeting. We did, we're going to be passionate, over raising eggs on with Gallagher and Callahan. What else could I renew?
Next year we'll have hot hydrogen men in on the committee. Let's see, what did you do with that?
That's a challenge, that's a challenge, Sean.
Well, there's some students over at middle school.
There you go.
Give you a menu, it's all right. Anybody have anything else they'd like to add? Okay, I think I have a feeling the next committee meeting is going to be a roll up your sleeves and we want to go through. So, thank you. Dwight, have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
One vote in favor?
Aye.
You adjourn.